Go ahead.
Sir, I'd like to move your motion to come out of executive.
Second.
Thinking about counsel.
Yep.
Burden?
Yep.
Any discussion?
Recording in progress.
Okay, sir, I'd like to keep my motion to come out of executive, please. Thinking by, uh...
If you're I introduce the...
Counselor, Counselor Burden. Any discussion?
I'm a drunk.
Eric Dunn called with the vote.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
He's coming out of.
Executives.
Chairman Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chappell?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I can count them. Out to, out of executive, now to open this. Out of six.
Guys, I think he's right for us.
You see, Councilman Rebar?
Did you hear me?
Uh, thank you, Chairman. So, we have previously adopted a resolution for the council to go to Washington DC and meet with officials of the new administration.
You're all safe, you know next week.
The primary, uh, one of the main representatives we wanted to see was the new Secretary of Interior, Doug Burrow. We later found out that he wasn't going to be available. He had some last minute, uh, travel that he had to do and wasn't going to be able to meet with us. That because some of the other representatives that we hoped to meet with were still yet to be determined, that we decided as a council among ourselves unofficially to postpone our trip. Which, uh, some of us kind of regret because after, after we made that decision and we did cancel all of our reservations and our attorney council, our meeting that we did have, uh, verified in Washington DC, uh, we had, had firmed up the agenda and some of the ones that were considered to be determined actually, uh, became more substantiated. They were, uh, they were, they were verified that we could meet with certain people. So, in light of that, a couple of us council members wanted to, uh, go ahead and try to, to keep our reservations and go in light of the new information. The, uh, full council, uh, just, uh, decided that we would, we'd just reschedule the whole trip at another time. So, that being said, and today during the executive session, we, we discussed the, the situation about going to Washington again among ourselves. And I think it's a consensus that we do want to go again and try, uh, to meet with some of these same individuals in Washington and maybe some others. And that they'll be back in session after their spring break. Uh, the, the representatives, senators and congress members or representatives, uh, and, and the secretaries of the different departments that we wanted to meet with, the Department of Interior and EPA in particular, that they'll be back in session, uh, and starting with the week of April the 28th. And I think they'll be there through May the 22nd. So, our legal council suggested that we try to go in the first week or two of that trip, which would be the week of April the 28th or the week of May the 5th. And, uh, so those are the dates that we are considering rescheduling our trip to Washington DC. And I believe it was Councilman Big Horse that thought maybe even the earlier, April 28th, might be more preferred because it won't be long before the activities around here start to get, uh, pretty busy for, uh, uh, you know, for our cultural activities. So, maybe, maybe April the 28th might be, uh, the best target date to go back to DC. So, anyway, it's not set in stone yet, but it's something we talked about and something that we'll still be discussing in the days and weeks to come. And I just wanted to share that with everybody and, uh, certainly would like to hear from any of the other council members that want to.
So, it's all depending on, um, Raleigh?
No.
I mean, when we can get the dates of those appointments.
Thank you. Um, if I might ask our Chief of Staff, I'm pretty sure in previous councils, we passed a resolution to not have vote, poll votes anymore. Cause can you look and see if you can find that, shoot it out to all eight of us? Okay. Cause I think we're starting to go back down a beaten path at poll votes. And when that happens, no, I'm not talking to you, I'm talking to the council. That happens and some of us get left out. And, uh, and I think that was the reason why we do have the right ability to call an emergency meeting in two days. So, I would prefer we do that route rather than poll voting and those kind of things. I think, I, I'm pretty sure we have a resolution not to do it.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, I, uh, I like that idea and I think he's right. I remember, I remember something to that effect that, that we can't do this by, we shouldn't be doing it by, by telephone or, uh, or email would be another form.
Especially if I might interrupt, especially if it's a standing resolution.
Yeah.
To, to negate the standing resolution by poll vote, then I think it's not, we can't do it.
That's right, without, without rescinding or modifying that resolution. I understand that. And I'd be in favor also of a emergency meeting that Councilman Red Corn suggested. But, and maybe that's the way, once we talk amongst ourselves about the dates, then maybe we should ask the chairman to call for a special, a special meeting with proper due notice of 48 hours, uh, when we do decide to set a date to go in any details concerning that. But we do have a standing resolution to go to Washington. So, I don't think that we need another resolution to go to Washington. We have that, it's just setting the date. And we can talk about it amongst ourselves, ask the chairman to call for a special meeting, uh, which I guess could be done virtually by Zoom if we need be, uh, like any meeting. And maybe, it may be set the date in a, in a, in a video like that. Thank you, Chairman.
I think the, uh, you gotta have so many votes to have a special meeting, is that correct? How many, how many is it?
I'm pretty sure it's five.
You gotta have five votes. So, if you just, we call a special session.
But if we have a special...
You gotta have five votes to, to approve.
How long?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I got the floor. I have the floor. You gotta have five votes to have a special session. If everybody agrees, then we have a special session. Now, when this all started, um, uh, when that, when we decided to go to DC last month, it was last month, I think, when I, I said at the very beginning, I said, I, in the very beginning, when y'all wanted me to be the chairman, and you voted for me to be the chairman.
I nominated you, I know.
I, I got the floor. When you voted for me to be the chairman, I said, I'm gonna do what the council wants to do. I'm not gonna object to it. If they don't wanna go, we don't go. And also, uh, uh, I don't say anything. Anyway, that, that was my consensus from the very beginning. And, uh, so if you wanna have a special election, you gotta have five votes to do it. That's, that's in the regula, that's in our policy.
No.
Councilman Waller? Go ahead.
I handled this case in court for the OSH Menual Council. The actual element that we come out of court with, the nation stopped us from having phone polls. But after COVID, the Congress was allowed to do the other type of having meetings. The only requirement is, we had never had that unless it was requested to the chairman to have this special meeting. You've got to be able to bring out your agenda two days ahead of time. Just, and that, we all sit on boards and stuff, so that's how it's actually commitment. I do think there's another question, that's why I abstain. I sit on too many of these. Secondary is, the other issue is exactly that. I feel that after COVID, as long as we follow the criteria of calling the special meeting through the chairman, we're fine. And then you, you could be allowed however you want to take care of it. Uh, for the record, I only voted, uh, my comment is not a yes or no vote when this talk about Washington. I put it to the call of the chair, which it should be.
I also told the council too at the time, if y'all wanna go, go. Uh, whoever wants to go, go. If you don't wanna go, then don't go. Counsel, uh, Counselwoman Irwin?
What's your definition of special meeting? Does that mean we can do poll?
No, it's because you have an agenda that you voted on to have your regular meetings and Friday meetings. Anything other than those are called a special, uh, meeting.
Can we do those by Zoom or?
You can do anything you want.
Yeah.
Well, I thought so.
Well, I know so.
Councilman Red Corn?
Okay, thank you, Chair. I have to disagree. You don't, you don't have to poll to have a special meeting. You as a chairman can call a special meeting. You have the ability.
We still have to have five votes to do that?
No.
I have to look. I think whenever, um...
Hold on, hold on.
You guys rewrote the policy of procedures. It was that the chairman could call a special meeting if he had the consensus of four other council members.
Four?
So, the four and the chairman.
I can read them to you.
But I don't.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Chairman?
Go ahead.
Uh, under our policies of procedures that, uh, Chief of Staff mentioned, 2.2 special meeting, the chairperson may call a special meeting of the OSH Menual Council at any time, business matters of the OSH Menual State dictate the necessity for a special meeting. Period.
That's it. I sit on another board and I say, I'm the chairman, I'm gonna call a special meeting. Why? And I think you hit it, Mr. Waller, Chair, Councilman Waller. You don't spring something on people that own shares in the head rights. We have a meeting in the dark and they don't know about it. Whatever you decide, you gotta announce it in public in two places and announce what you're doing so they'll know that you're gonna have a vote to, that impacts their headright. So, that's the reason, I think it's a, it's a good thing.
The decision is the chairperson.
And that to call it a special meeting rests solely on the chairperson, in my, in what you just read.
That's right. And he may poll us if he wants to. He could call and see what we think about it if he wants to, but it'll be his.
You didn't have to go, I need five of, whatever. But you could do it without all of us objecting. You can call it and say, I'm gonna have a meeting because whatever. It's impacting the headrights and to me, the DC trip, it impacted the headrights. I mean, but that's just me. I mean, everybody has, I, you know, respecting everyone's opinion. I'm not pointing fingers at everyone. I'm saying, since we're talking about it, call a special meeting if you want. It's our job, you get up here.
Chairman, I do have a little bit to add to that. There, there are two more sentences that this goes on to say, maybe for the record, I'll read them out loud. The 2.3 time of special meeting called by the OSH Menual Council members. Uh, the chair shall be, shall be required to call a special meeting within 10 days upon receipt of a request in the form of a petition by at least four members of the council, provided that no special meeting shall be called except on matters of serious concern to the OSH Menual Council. So, you can, the, the previous sentence is that the, the chairman can call it, but so can the council members, four of us. And then it goes on to say, 2.4, special meeting times. Uh, the meeting time for special meeting shall be held at the 10 o'clock hour on the date noticed to council members and the public. So, that's the pool just, uh, so the, the chairman may call a special meeting, the council members may, if there's four of us, uh, that wanna do it. And they shall be held at 10 o'clock, uh, and properly noticed. Thank you, Chairman.
Anybody else?
Just one clarity. We only did that and we had consensus and request. And then we would admit it because I, as chairman, I was your fifth vote. So, I figured if five of us would want this, we would, uh, have the agenda and the agenda only covers the item that you called a special meeting for. Because I've already written, if you guys have a special meeting, then you added some things to the agenda. You can't do that.
You have one, one item.
I just closing on my agenda item, if I may, if you feel.
Yes, ignore that.
Uh, okay, uh, is that, uh, that, that we discussed rescheduling our trip to DC for those of us that would, you know, wanna go. Uh, and at a mutually agreeable time in a date, it was recommended by our attorney that we go April the 28th or May the 5th. Uh, like Councilman, uh, Big Horse's idea to go on the 28th if possible for the reasons that we, you know, he mentioned and that I, I mentioned also. But, so if I'm not, just for clarity, uh, this is gonna be something that we can talk about the dates and let the chairman know what our thoughts are. And then the chairman can call a special meeting to set that date and to instruct our count, legal council to try to reestablish all those appointments that we cancel or postponed.
Counselor, that, uh, Chair?
I think it's also important to, on those two options on the dates to go up there, I think we'll, we need to stay in constant contact with our legal council up there to see which one of those dates happens to bear most, the most fruit with the ability to meet the most representatives up there. Whether it's on the 28th and we can meet with four people or it's on the 20, or the other option and we can meet with eight people. I think that's important, but what, to me, it's equally important, if not more, is that whenever we have an opportunity to meet with those people, I think it would be beneficial for us to either have a special election, a special meeting, to be able to sit down and talk about bullet points and the things we want to talk with them about, to fully prep ourselves instead of going up there and having a meeting at nine, at nine, at nine o'clock and, and discussing what we're gonna talk with them about in the breakfast. I, I, I wanna be better prepared now and every time we go up there to talk to those people. I think it's imperative that we have a, a time where we can all zoom in or whatever and talk about, you know, have talking points. Once we get up there, we're all on the same sheet of music and in a unified approach, I think that's gonna show strength, more so than our preparedness. Thank you.
Special. Well, when, uh, when we first scheduled the, what we...
I'm just saying from a paperwork standpoint, to, I'm gonna have to redo purchase orders and every request for everybody individually and get those signed by you all and then processed through. So, the sooner you can come up with a date for me. It, I, we pulled some strings and got everything through last time. We had time, but they're getting them through. But I just want, it's gonna take probably two weeks to get everything. So, I just wanted y'all to be aware of that when you're thinking of your plans.
Uh, we can't, we can't do an open-ended purchase order for, we, we, we need that flexibility.
Counselor Waller, Counselor Waller?
I, I want to hear what our Chief of Staff is going to recommend.
I don't necessarily think that a special meeting is called for in this particular instance because we have a standing resolution that's open-ended that says that we can travel. I think that's more of like an administrative type thing where you guys can just talk amongst yourselves, figure it out and then get back to us and we'll put the things in.
I...
Well, we wrote, we wrote a letter to, uh, Mr. Burden and that stated just about everything we need to talk about. Also, I wanna remind y'all too that, uh, these, these people in DC are very busy, very, the first hundred days and it's, it's probably gonna go farther than that. And the second Menual Council was Dyer, Sonny Abbott and all that, guys wanted to go to DC and Andrew was...
Yes.
Was the chairman at the time. And he said, we said, it's not a good time to go. Don't go up there, you're gonna walk into shut doors and lock doors, you're not gonna be able to get in. And they went up there anyway. And that's exactly what happened. And they came home and they just told them what they needed to hear, we'll see y'all later. And they got back on the plane, came home. Now, I didn't want that to happen this time either. That probably would've, would've probably happened. So, we, later on in this month or in, in May, they may be a little bit more at ease up there. That might be, that might be the best. I am suggesting that this, so, Burger's gonna be hard to get a hold of, that's all there is to it. And we were relying on our attorney to do that. He couldn't do it the first time. Counselor Red Corn?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Raleigh set up a meeting, uh, in the past and I went to DC and it was a really good meeting. And we went to, went through the halls of Congress. We went to see the EPA, DLE, Indian Department. We were there. I mean, we had two full days of, uh, seeing a lot of folks. I think to put it in Raleigh's hands and set the date, I say 28th, let's go. And let's just go and get Raleigh, do the best he can and get who we can in the doorway. And, uh, we just take it from there because I, in my view, us being in DC is just gonna be an added plus for our shareholders. And you heard Raleigh say, don't just go one time, go a couple of times because you gotta have your, your self in front of these people who are making big decisions. And when you see them, you know, you see, or they see you, it makes a tremendous impact. I went with, uh, Stephanie, myself, Cynthia Boone, the late Cynthia Boone and Joe Trishawala. And Cynthia gave a really good talk in front of a big committee and I don't remember the big wigs being there, but she gave a big talk and then we met a few people, come back, we got $3 million for our plugin program. So, you know, I think that's what we're talking about. I was really impressed. Wow, and it was $300 million that wasn't through a grant. It was just here, here's cash. So, we took off and started plugging well. So, I, and you know, and you guys went back and got a million and a half more. So, I mean, I just think it's just a benefit for us to get up there and get in front of the, the decision makers. Like I said, I'm not point fingers anymore. I just wanna say in my one of eight, let's just go to DC as, as quickly as we can because day after day, they're making decisions. And I think if we would've went quickly, we'd maybe got in front of this, all this rigamarole that's going on in DC, us versus them. I always think it was so new, maybe we, we could've gone in there right off and set our, I don't know, that's here or there now. We're in a battle. We're in a battle for funding. We're in a battle for getting what we want out of BIA plus EPA and the DOI. I mean, these are our decision makers. So, I think, I say, let's take that 28th of April, that's my thought, and just roll. So, Lacy knows what to do, Lynn, Lisa knows what to do. And set up our meeting, let Raw, her and Raleigh, let them talk and figure out the dates we're gonna fly and let's go. I'm in favor of that as well.
We, we all wanted to go in December and November, we started talking about when Trump first got in, remember that? And we didn't have your money, go. We were broke. As a matter of fact, I, we were, we were in the minus call, I remember, and all of a sudden, we, we got a little bit of extra money and, and now everybody wants to go. That's, that's fine. I'd ready to go, I had all my cleaners done, all my, everything pressed and cleaned. Ready to go. But I do what the council wants to do. And if everybody says, let's go, let's go.
Okay.
I'm up for that.
Yeah.
I just, what I want, what I want not to happen though is get up there and not, not see Burger. That's what I hope, not, that, that don't happen. It's a very big possibility unless we, unless we give them a little time to get stretched out. That's, that's my opinion. Everybody says, that's my opinion, well, that's my opinion. I don't wanna go up there and, and, and they say, okay, we'll see you guys later, you know? We will do what you wanna do, then, then, then that's all. That's, that's happened before too, you know? Counselor Waller?
I'm just looking at these photos of a fine man named Edward Waller here in Washington DC in 2019, 2021, in my ninth Secretary of Interior. But also, I'm sitting here by the United States War Room. That's where we're dying to give that speech in. So, that's all I got, brother.
They all laughed like it.
Okay, we go onto the open business, make the report. We got a, a report on the election committee and Lisa, or one of us said?
Um, the last election meeting was held on March 25th here in the council chambers. Um, those present were Chairman Red Eagle, Councilwoman Irwin, Councilman Big Horse and Councilman Rebar zoomed in. Also, Addie McLean was on Zoom and Nathan Ha, Ha?
That's fine.
Okay. He was here as well.
Was she close enough?
Close enough, thank you.
I remember. They were talking about the post office box and we talked about having the box open two or year round and get two boxes, one for requests and one for ballots. Uh, discussion was held on the date the eligible voters can request the ballots. Of course, we don't get the official list until the March 26th payment, so that kinda limits some of that time there. Um, had, they want the election supervisor to look into sending out postcards to all eligible voters notifying of the election and to update addresses. Um, doing memo, understanding with, memorandum of understanding with the election office about storing the ballots after the election. Hunter was not there, so we didn't know if he had found any other companies that handle the ballots. Uh, Nathan did volunteer to help with whatever he could with the elections. He also, he works for the post office in Stillwater, so is very familiar with how that system works. Not, there was discussion on not using the OSH Nation seal, but something that is specific to the OSH Menuals Council. They looked on the boxes and then decided that probably maybe a five by 11 box and a five by five and a half, which would, for the most part, cost $172 a year. $72 for the small one and $100 for the little bit larger one. And the next meeting will be April 29th, 10 o'clock in the chambers.
Thank you, Lisa. Uh, also, uh, uh, on, on the ballots, everybody's kind of wondering about the old ballots when they're, after they're counted. We recommended in the meeting that we go one year, 360 days, keep the, keep the, keep the election ballots as a, as a source to whatever, for whatever reason. If somebody wants to challenge, well, them ballots are still being, they won't be destroyed. And also, um, remember, you know, when this election used to be done by the Bureau of Indian Affairs, which a lot of us don't like, you know? And, and, uh, now they turn it all over to us. We, we do as we wish to do on this election. We don't get no, I mean, anything from the nation. We don't get anything from BIA. We do it ourselves. Everything's up to us. So, Counselor Wall?
I don't believe you should get away from the seal personally. Their identification and when it comes through the mail, you, you can change it a little bit to whatever you need to do. I think the other concern I have is that we all looked at where you send requests for absentee ballots out. We've gotta make that easier. And then we can, they can all request electronically. I think we need to fix that. And as far as rewriting the election laws or codes, I don't want to see where you take away any of the seating of the former codes until we're standalone government. I, I use it to protect us. Thank you.
Counselor Rebar?
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Uh, in light of the decision to go to Washington, April the 28th, uh, will be, if most of us or some of us will be, be away for the next committee meeting, so we'll need to reschedule that April 29th committee meeting, which we don't have to do today, but I just wanted to point that out. That, that'll need to be changed.
Okay.
And that, that's what I was checking, checking with Chief of Staff. See, after COVID, the Congress is allowed to do the, uh, the meeting and then have someone come in and they're allowed to vote.
That?
Please.
That was your call when you were the chairman? I asked if you still wanted to allow them and it was if the chairman agrees to it and they have a reason, not just because they didn't feel like coming.
Back to the call with the chair.
It was on the chairman.
As I gave you, uh, my, my, thank you.
As long as they're reserved in.
Thank you, dear. Yes, ma'am.
Well, that's one of the very reasons why I wanted to start this election, committee meetings, this, last year, I, and, and this, this is a thing just like this, we need to keep some, some change. There's always gonna be something, you know? And we forget about it or something. We need to keep it in our mind all the time and, and this is what, April of 2025, we've got about eight or more, eight more months of this year and then next thing, it's 2026, that's election year, chief and everybody else, everybody. So, we need, we need, we wanna get it right this time. We don't want, and we don't, I don't think it was illegal the last time, people just bossed. We don't want, I don't, I don't think it was illegal the last time, it was just botched, in my opinion, it botched. It should have been done better. In other words, it was messed around. And, uh, but, uh, that's just my thoughts about it. It should, those votes, they weren't counted down at the post office, should have been counted. They weren't counted. Somebody else might have got in, we don't know. I wanna, I wanna make that, make it good, that's, that's my, that's my thoughts.
Yes, sir, every tribal election that I helped run, judge, or interpret for, you did count the ballots. But if they did not make a decision in the outcome of the election, then they don't have to be, they could be voided then. Because you gotta remember, they didn't hit a criteria, but the other ballots did. But we used to count them and then, and then report it, as, and see if it actually changed the election. In our election, it does make a difference. And it does on theirs too. You know, I don't know whether I hurt more losing something here by six votes or a national election by one. But uh, that's what I think, call of the chair.
The, the election person down at the OCSM Nation election, she, she met with us about two meetings, two meetings ago, election frame counted, she gave us some good ideas, Hunter, Hunter Waltz, is his name Walt?
Paul.
Okay, Hunter, our new supervisor, our busy knee, and he's working with her on, on some good, on some ideas that would, that would help our election. I think the biggest, the biggest problem, the absentee ballots, when, when do we give out notices and when, like I said, in my opinion, they need to be put out through, in January.
Well.
Maybe even before then. But he's working with her and then we all left him in. Okay, uh, did a motion to approve the minutes. So move it.
Second.
Here's the Councilman. Any discussion?
It's one test.
Are they, can you, uh, for both sets?
There's two tests of me, me and.
Give me the first date.
Um, April or no March, whatever. The March minutes, uh, three seven and three nineteen.
Three seven, Chairman.
On my, my. One at a time or both?
Am I allowed to do both?
Yeah, sure.
Three seven and.
Three nineteen.
And three nineteen, Chairman.
Councilman Redhorn.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, just a request for correction, I think March seventh's gotten on Mr. Rebar and me apps.
Oh, does it?
Yeah, and then down through it, I'm voting on everything, so.
Good.
Okay, a copy and paste and then change.
Okay.
I will fix that.
I didn't know if you carried down the previous meeting or.
Okay, I'm changing it right now.
Go ahead.
President, President, so, got it.
And then Chairman, that's the one I'm asking for that motion.
Two seconds.
Still doing it two at a time or just one at a time? Two at a time, okay.
Yes, sir.
Second about Councilwoman Irwin?
Yes, sir.
Motion by Councilman Waller. Call for the vote.
Councilman Redhorn?
What changes, yes.
Chairman Reddickel?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chappellford?
Yes.
Councilman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Council, and due to the motion to adjourn.
So move it.
Second.
Member of Councilwoman Irwin, motion by Councilman Waller. Any, any discussion? Very good. Call for the vote.
Chairman Reddickel?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chappellford?
Yes.
Councilman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Councilman Reddickel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Council.